Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. We have a quorum, but we're going to wait just a couple of minutes because of the traffic out on Sixth Street to see if any other board members show up in the next five minutes or so. Test. All right, folks, we've got six out of our eight board members here, and in the interest of time, we're going to move forward. So I'm going to call to order the October 18th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Board for the City of Fort Lauderdale. If you would all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance before we get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Prior to the approval of the minutes, we do have a quorum. To my left, I've got Brad Cohen, Jay Scheckman, and Steve Gannon, and to my right, I have got Shari McCartney and Marilyn Mamanow. And I do see Mary Furtick coming, so you'll note that she's on her way in, and she'll join us. Can I get somebody to approve the minutes from the last meeting? Move to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion before we vote on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none?
Just very quickly, for the record, Mr. Scheckman made the motion, and Ms. McCartney seconded.
That is correct. Next up, before we get into the nuts and bolts, we need to do a public swearing. Anybody that wishes to speak to any matter this evening, please stand and take the, the public, sorry, I'm swearing in, sorry.
Hi, if you're going to talk to the board today, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
And if you didn't sign in on your way out, you don't need to sign in before you speak, but we'd like to have everybody's recordation. So our first agenda item, case UDP S22022, the applicant has requested to withdraw the application. Any conversation, dialogue, somebody want to make a motion?
So moved.
I'm moving that.
Moved by Mary.
Second.
Second by Jay Scheckman. Any additional conversation? Hearing, seeing, none. I guess you need to call the roll on this, or is this a voice vote?
You can do either.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is case number UDP S22063, and let's start with disclosure. Steve, we'll start down there with you.
Email from Hendrix Isle HOA, phone call with the applicant's attorney, and a site visit.
Okay.
Same, as Steve.
Brad?
Site visit and phone call with applicant's attorney.
Mary?
Site visit, we got an email.
Site visit, we got an email, and I spoke with Ms. Toothaker.
I spoke with Ms. Toothaker.
Marilyn?
Google search and text with Ms. Toothaker.
And I spoke to the applicant's attorney as well. So, good evening, Ms. Toothaker. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Chair.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning and Zoning Board. Thank you very much. I am Stephanie Toothaker. I'm here on behalf of the developer of 87 Isle of Venice condominium. And, and the developers here, as long, as well as Adachi, our architect, our landscape architect, and some other folks that are part of the team, and we're all here to answer any questions that you may have. So we're very pleased to present this to you this evening. I know you're all very familiar with the Los Olas Isles and Isle of Venice, I'm sure. This is the, the property here at 87 Isle of Venice, and you can see from this aerial that this is, this is an aisle that has had a lot of multifamily development, so this is certainly consistent with the pattern of development. The site is .33 acres, and it is, it is zoned multifamily. Just showing you some context on the street, there is a building there today that is a four-unit building. It's definitely past its useful life, and, and I'm just showing you some of the, some of the images for what surrounds the piece of, the piece of property. So the item that's before you this evening is an eight-unit project, and it complies with all of the codes except for the yard modification request that is before you. It's a waterway use, so it's a site plan Level 3 Planning and Zoning Board. It is a total, as I said, of eight units. It's 55, 55 feet high to the roof slab. It exceeds the minimum lot size. It exceeds the minimum landscaping, and it, and it meets the parking requirement, parking and bicycle requirement. Just showing you some images of the building itself. It's beautifully designed by Adachi. This is the front entrance to the building. Very beautiful, very modern, very in, in vogue for what people are looking for today when they purchase condominium units. So we did have a, a large number of meetings with the community. I'm very pleased that we were able to do that. And I'm going to share with you in a moment the various iterations of the plan that we went through to get to the final plan that's before you this evening. So we had some on-site, we had some on Zoom, we did a combination of those, and we had, I personally had a lot of follow-up conversations with the president of the association, and also some of the other board members who were very active in discussing the project with us, and I feel like we've, we're really, really able to work with the neighbors. The last meeting that we had was the last public participation meeting in August this year. So this is the first version of the project that we originally submitted to the, to the planning department. And as you can see, originally, it had setbacks of 15 feet on both sides. There was a 20-foot setback on the rear and 21 feet, 4 inches on the front. And we heard from the neighbors that this was not their favorite, particularly as it related to the front and side setbacks. So we kind of went back to the drawing board after we heard that, and worked with Sal Cannizzaro, who's the developer, and Adachi worked very hard on coming up with this second iteration of the project. So this one maintained the 20 feet at the rear setback, and we increased the front setback to 21 feet, 4 inches, and increased the side setbacks to 17 feet, 6 inches. And we met with the neighborhood again, and we presented this and said, you know, is this better? Are you okay with this? And they said, you know, we actually are okay with the side setbacks being a little smaller, but what we'd really like you to do is increase the front yard setback. So we went back to the drawing board again, and we proposed this version. We essentially gave them a, a choice between the two different versions, and this is the version that the neighborhood chose. So what we ended up with was being able to push the building further from the street, which is what they felt was important because they wanted to maintain view corridors down the street. So we increased the front setback to 23 feet, 6 inches, and we were through coordination with the neighbors that forced us to make the building just a little bit fatter, so we, we went back to the 17 feet on both sides, which are still very generous setbacks. So this is the version that's before you this evening, so it's 23 feet, 6 inches from the front, and 17 feet on both sides, and of course, maintained the 20 feet on the back. So this is just an iteration of what that looks like in comparison to the, to the buildings that are around us, and you can see that it's, it's very generous, and it's, it's really more in line with what you see already on the street itself. So, so here, I'm just showing you with regard to the setbacks that I just went through, but also, we do have the code, of course, allows you to have some balconies. So you've got the building setback, and then you've got some balconies that just go a little bit further out, and, and of course, the neighbors are very familiar with that as well. I thought it would just be relevant to share some of the other projects that have been recently approved that have also received yard modifications. It's one of the discussions that I, I know I've had with some of you, and, and we have sort of internally in the development community, is that the way that the code is drafted, the code says that your, your yard has to be half the height of your building. Well, the reality is, when you develop a piece of property, that, that's not really possible unless you're just building a single-family home. That's, that's the reality of what half the height of the building is, because if you, if you force that half the height for a building that is allowed to go to the height of where this zoning is, it essentially squeezes you down to what becomes a non-buildable lot. So that's why you find that we're often here, asking for yard modifications. So this is asking for a yard modification, but I also thought it was relevant to share with you some of the other projects on the street that have received even larger yard modifications than this project is asking for. So one of those is Casa Murano, which is at 14 Isle of Venice, and they have yard modifications down to 15 feet on the sides. And another one is Seaside Villas, which is 55 through 85, and they also have 15-foot yard modifications, and those are both recently approved projects. And I'm showing you there on the map where those are in the context of, of 87 Isle of Venice. So this is just an analysis. I don't need to read through all of this, but essentially, we do a very full analysis, and I know you know that, that takes the ULDR and talks about the justification and why we are asking for the yard modifications. One of the things that the, that the code asks you to discuss is, is shadows. Shadow is not, is not the, the issue here. We did do shadow studies, of course, we always do shadow studies, but shadow really wasn't the issue. The issue is, is the lot consistency with what else is on the street, consistency with other yard modifications that have been granted. And we've addressed, I think, the, the view corridors very, very well through landscaping, through things, and a lot of this, like I said, was in, in a very, very constant communication with the, with the community that lives right around this. So this is just water and sewer capacity. The water and sewer capacity came back clean, that it can accommodate. Again, there's four units there today. This is an increase of only four units. Trips, it adds one, one trip on the street. Again, it's only additional four units. And, and this is a letter agreement that we entered into with, with Hendrix Isle, Isle of Venice. I, I will show you, it's, it's not signed by, by the president, but it's, she told me it's okay to say that her computer got a virus in it, and she wasn't able to print the letter and sign it and send it back, but asked me to say that it was okay, that she is, she will get it back to us, and does agree with the letter, and does agree with the terms of the letter. And I want to offer those as voluntary conditions, because there's a couple of important things in here that, that we had a lot of discussions with the neighborhood about. So, so one is, is that the developer will include a disclosure statement within its declaration of condominium or declaration of restrictive covenants notifying purchasers and owners as to the effective City of Fort Lauderdale parking restrictions, including the 24-hour parking rule and the residential neighborhood parking program that is being developed by the homeowners' association now. And we, of course, agreed to that. This is also important, too, that the developer will provide off-site and off-street parking accommodations during construction. If you've been down that street, you know there's a lot of construction on the street, and it can be very frustrating for the people that live there. So of course, we agreed to that. And in that vein, we also agreed to hire off-duty City of Fort Lauderdale police officers if we were going to have large construction trucks coming down the street, because the street is narrow, and I, I actually, myself, got caught behind one of the trucks when I was going to one of the neighborhood meetings. So I certainly understand that issue, and we, we would like to offer that as well as a voluntary condition. The developer, developer shall ensure that any debris associated with the construction of the development project will not be placed in the public right-of-way or neighboring properties, and shall maintain the construction site in accordance with applicable requirements. And finally, developer shall use extreme caution in order to preserve adjacent city and private properties of the construction site, and developer shall be responsible for the costs of repair of all roadway, curbside, swale, and sidewalk damaging resulting from the construction activities of the developer. And we are voluntarily offering those. I will make sure they go with the clerk, and they become part of, hopefully, a site plan approval, and that is, that is something that the Neighborhood Association asked us for. Finally, I just wanted to share with you, we have a, a lot of letters of support from our neighbors. The property, 87 Isle of Venice, is, is highlighted in red, and we have a large number of letters that we are just showing you where those letters are, are coming from. These are in addition to the Neighborhood Association, and these are just copies of the actual letters, and of course, we'll submit all of those for the record as well. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, before, hang on a second, Mary. Before we move on, let it reflect. Patrick McTeague joined us at 6:10. Patrick, do you have any disclosures?
Spoke with counsel for the applicant.
Okay.
And did a site visit.
Thank you. All right. Does that conclude?
It does.
Your presentation?
Thank you, Chair.
All right. Mary?
I just was wondering if you had a copy of that agreement on the parking that we could take a look at. I know you had it in the PowerPoint.
It's in the PowerPoint. I can give you my copy here. It's right here.
Or maybe they can make copies for us?
I did not. I'm sorry. I should have.
No, no, I'm just saying, maybe the staff can, just so we have it in front of us. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead, Marilyn.
Could you bring up a copy of the letter from the Civic Association? What was their, what was the content of the letter? I didn't, can't read it from here.
That's the letter I read.
Oh, the conditions were the letter you read. Have you got any correspondence from the Civic Association as to whether they support the project or not?
So the president, this is the, they wrote us a letter, which I think is in your packet.
Yeah.
This letter mirrors exactly the letter of what they asked for us to agree to, which we agreed to, and this is the one that Debbie had said she wasn't able to sign it today because she was having computer issues. They, they did not take a position for or against the property, because there were some internal discussions about, about some rules that they want to put forward in the future, but, but I, and I don't want to speak for her, but a large number of the people that are in the association, that are on the board in the association, have told me that they're in support of the project, but that the board declined to take any position.
So officially, they've declined to take a position?
Officially, they declined to take a position. That's correct.
Any other questions of the applicant's counsel before we open the meeting to the public? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody that wishes to be heard and speak on this item? Sir, come forward, and then after you, Ted, and sir, I believe you want to speak. No?
The next one.
Oh, the next one? Okay, got it. I see it. Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you'll give us your name, please?
Yes, sir. I am Stan Stein. I live at 301 Hendrix Isle. I'm a vice president on the HVNA board. I've been involved with this thing since the beginning, and I'm in very highly supportive of it, because I believe that the developer has been very responsive in terms of setback modifications. The agreement to transport workers in and out is a big deal, and he also committed to a beautification project to be named. Personally, I'd like to see our bridges painted, excuse me, and new signs put in, but that's neither here nor there. So I feel that having walked up and down that street, looking at the neighboring properties, and looking at the lovely El Sorento that is currently there, that I'm, as a board member, very supportive. The truth of the matter is, of the five board members, it is at least three to two in favor of. As Stephanie mentioned, there were some internal squabbles and disagreements, but at the end of the day, three to two in favor of.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You mentioned something about a community improvement project to be named. Could you elaborate on that, please?
I, I told you what, what I know. When I talked to the developer, he, and he said, you know, if you guys want us to do something, you know, plants, trees, whatever, and I kind of, you know, unofficially said, well, I'd like to see our bridges painted.
Okay, but that's not part of this application. That's, that would be between you and the developer.
As far as I know, that's correct.
Thank you.
But I believe him to be a person of his word, and I know where to find him.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else like to be heard on this item? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public portion of this, bring it back to the board for discussion and/or a vote.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Marilyn.
Actually, it's a question for Steph. In the modification of the yards, first of all, I think it's a lovely building.
Do you want to move your mic just a little?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, I think it's a lovely building, but I have a question for the staff. On the modification of the yards, it says the criteria that we have to use when considering a yard modification is that we have to find that there is continuity of architectural features with adjacent properties, which encourage public participa-, public participation, interaction between the proposed development and the existing neighborhood. That's the criteria. Could you explain to me what that means?
Hello?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yvonne Redding, Urban Design and Planning. So, under this criteria, we ask that you look at surrounding neighborhood buildings that have also gotten yard modifications to see if there is balconies, other finistration that enhances the pedestrian realm as you travel up and down the aisles. And we feel that this project does. It has ample balconies, it has movement to the building, and it engages the public realm, and we ask that you consider those different aspects of design.
Okay.
And not all buildings are the same or have the same style, but they all contribute to the landscape of.
Okay, so you're tie, the, the code, not you. The code ties the modification Okay, so you're tied, the code, not you. The code ties the modification of the yards to the previous modifications in adjacent properties? That I didn't see, but I understand that it encourages public participation, interaction between the proposed development and the existing neighborhood. Are you saying that we have to consider that since the design of the building and the elements, the architectural elements of the building are somehow contributing to a pedestrian experience that would cause us to, or cause us to, reduce the yards? I'm very big on yards, so I'm struggling here.
So the yard modification is allowing the developer to enhance other aspects of the waterways and views corridors, and that's with setbacks, undulations?
Okay, okay, okay. Now I'm here. I think I'm understanding you now. As a consequence, as a consequence of the reduction of the yards, he is compensated for that by the architectural features of the building so that it's more pedestrian-friendly and modulated and...
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And then paragraph, the third page of your staff report, Yvonne, BB, just a little change, thanks.
I couldn't find, oh, BB.
Third page, sorry. I said page two is three, sorry, my bad.
That's okay. So the third paragraph on page three, I'm trying to find the...
So it's just a change from 4719 to BB2 instead of, instead of that, it should read 4719 to B2, and that is the paragraph that begins with pursuant to ULDR section, and then that's when it reads. So that's the second full paragraph.
Yeah, the second full paragraph. So I hit the B too hard, so there's two Bs, and should be only one.
Are there any additional questions, comments, motions? Mary?
Yeah, I, sorry, I don't have my form with me, but I'd like to move to approve with all of the conditions that are in the report plus this additional five conditions, five conditions that were added tonight. So I think that's a total of eight. And I'm glad you added these, so I'll just tell you that when I did talk with Ms. Toothacre, my comment was, I got stuck on this street because the traffic was unbelievable. And she said, we've signed, we've agreed to these conditions to address that issue. So I was glad you did. I think that was, hopefully, will be a model for everybody.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
Just to clarify the motion, so it is the existing staff conditions in the staff report, and also the conditions read on the record by the applicant's attorney.
Right, and I'm attaching, I can attach this to it with the five conditions.
Okay, and this is based on the testimony and the staff report as well?
Yes.
And this is case number UDP S22063. Thanks.
Yes.
Just for my clarification.
That was a great motion.
Will you be providing a copy of the five read conditions?
Was that the document that you guys copied, or no?
Here, there you go.
You want the copied one? Okay, yeah. So we just got to make sure.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion by Mary. I think I heard a second from Brad. Is that correct?
Yes.
We have a motion from Mary and a second from Mr. Cohen. Any further discussion before we take it to a vote? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Schuckman?
Yes.
Sorry. So that was Mr. Schuckman?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Furtick?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Mamanu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Wamip?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you all for coming.
That's not the right one.
All right, moving ahead. Third case, case PLR19062. We'll start at the other end. This time, Marilyn with disclosures.
Just a Google search.
None.
Mary?
I visited the site.
Brad?
None.
Site visit?
Site visit.
Site visit and an emailed letter from Bloom and Parham Attorneys.
Okay.
Oh, yes, I must add that. I got that, too. I forgot.
An ominous letter, very ominous.
Ominous or anonymous?
No, ominous.
Ominous.
Very...
You mean like Halloween?
Like threatening appeal.
I have no disclosures.
Threatening appeal if we don't approve of it.
Okay. So with that said, we have, I think, Karen Rivera, is that correct? Is Karen here representing the applicant?
Oh.
Doesn't.
All right. If you would please introduce yourself, sir.
I'd be happy to. My name is Simon Bloom. It's my honor and privilege to represent Hunter H. Holmes, and I'll start by apologizing to Mr. Gannon for the ominousness of the letter. That's my fault. I practice law in the state of Georgia. I was born down the street in North Miami and was born and raised off of Biscayne Boulevard, but I've since moved on to Atlanta. And in Georgia, we have to put a constitutional notice letter in the record every time there's a petition. So blame me for including what might otherwise be construed as ominous language. That's pretty standard in other states, but I completely get it, and it is my fault, don't blame him, for the ominousness of the letter. Please, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the merits. I believe in brevity and being as concise as possible. I am happy to introduce the team that's here. We have the project architect, we have the landscape architect, we have the engineer, we have Karen, the expediter, and myself, who's here basically to quarterback things. I know a little bit about a lot, but not much about anything in particular. That's why they're here. But the essence of this, and hopefully this is the least remarkable application for Level 3 that you all will see, because on all of the, all the tests, all the elements and all the requirements, this project and the proposal passes and is either consistent with or exceeds those minimum requirements, thus, I think, resulting in the staff recommendation of approval. I love the staff report. Hopefully, you've read the staff report, and you know I love it because it recommends approval. But if there are other concerns or particular issues raised either by the esteemed board or by any opposition, I'd be happy to reserve, if the chair will allow, some time to discuss any of those items that come up. I, again, confess not being familiar with your laws protocol, but if there is an opportunity to do that, I'd like to reserve just a couple minutes to do that.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. And so, to that end, this is the River Oaks project. I appreciate many of you have looked to see where it is. It will be, without question, a substantial improvement on what's there now and what's surrounding the subject property. The project has been, was originally zoned back in '06. There was a prior owner. He or she or they went through the application process. It got stalled for one reason or another. The current owner revisited that process, had an architect, switched architects. So this process has been a little bit more lengthy than any of us would like, particularly the owner, I'm sure. But I am proud and happy to report that after pretty significant public participation and DRC input and staff input, the resulting design, site plan, elevations and elements that I think you'll see in a minute when I invite the architect up are very much consistent with the code and the neighborhood and what I think any and all of us would want to have as our neighbor. It is a very well self-contained 17-unit, we call them townhomes. I think you all call them clusters. And I'm going to have to get to the bottom of where that term comes from at some point, but I don't want to waste your time with that. But it's, they're all internal facing, they're all fed into the middle, the garages are fed into the middle of the project. There's not enough room to do any kind of real amenity in the middle of the project, but there is some planting and some green space designed. It satisfies parking requirements, density requirements, all the requirements. I promised I'd be brief, and so I'm not going to go through all of them. But if it is of interest to the board, I would like to ask the architect to just bang through a quick presentation that shows the elevations in the site plan and what it's going to look like. So with that, with your leave, Mr. Chair, I'd like to invite whomever on the architecture team is going to come up. Thank you so much.
Hi, good evening. Dorota Lopez with GFD Group Miami, along with Andrea Blanco. So if we can... All right. So this is the location of the site. And the way we have it laid out, there are four main cluster buildings with 17 units in total. There is an access point from the main street, and then there is a central kind of landscape core, and then we have just all the required utilities that we need. The 17 units all have their own personal garages. We have two stories. And here are just the elevations. They have a lot of movement. They have the required percentage of glazing that we need. Just we're in compliance with height, and we really focused on bringing in a little bit more of a modern element to them. Here are just some renderings, so you get a little bit of the feel for how the site would feel and layout. This would be the main entrance that would pull the residents into the site. And here are just some elements with the balconies and just the glazing and all the landscaping that will be provided as well. And then just as a final slide, this is just showing some of the green space in reference to the layout of the units.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anything more to your presentation, sir? No, Mr. Chair, unless you want to hear from the engineer, the landscape architect, or questions for these. So I think there may be a couple of questions. Mary's waving her hand and getting ready to turn her microphone on.
I can wait if you want to, but I have a question. As you drive through this area, there are just beautiful trees. It's got an incredible tree canopy. And I'm wondering, as I'm looking at your pictures here, it looks like what you're planting are very small trees. Can you comment on what you will be putting in as far as landscaping?
Good evening. I'm David Odishu, the landscape architect for the project. To answer your question, we are keeping some of the larger trees on the site. That would be these here, these three oaks in the back. We're moving a large oak to the center of the island, and we're using about 80% of native trees, pigeon plums, satin leaves, sable palms, Simpson stoppers, those kind of things. So it's about 80% native, and the ground cover is 80% native as well.
Any other questions for the landscape architect while he's at the microphone?
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant? Jay?
Can you?
Sorry, Mary.
Do you have anything that illustrates how the development will be perceived from the street, from the, within the 24th Street?
Yeah, there wasn't a straight-on shot. I was, I noticed that as well, a straight-on shot of the entire front of the property, front agenda.
We don't have a rendering of that in this particular presentation. The site plan that we were referencing in terms of the landscape might be the closest thing we have in this presentation that would show that.
What about the top left? Is that...
That would be, yes. Yeah. That would be the front.
Top right corner?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, again, after the green space.
Yeah.
So the driveway is to the right of that brown, the brown module?
Correct.
I see. Okay.
Yes, yes.
Right, so we're looking at the rest. Thank you.
I have a question.
May I?
Let me recognize Sherry first, if you would. Marilyn, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, well, not for the architects, but for Mr. Stein.
Bloom.
Bloom, pardon me. The, evidently, there were at least two meetings with the neighborhood. Can you tell me if you know whether they were neighbors immediately adjacent to this and what issues were raised, and if they were what you did to ameliorate them?
Yes, I can tell you some of those answers. I do not know the addresses of the neighbors that participated in the public participation meetings. However, what was important was what they had to say. And so, things that were raised and addressed during those meetings were things like a concern for flooding. And the property already has flooding problems. And as you all may know, there is a city stormwater management project being done at that location as we speak. This project, as you probably also know, has to contain its own stormwater, and so there will not be any incremental increase in stormwater runoff. So that was number one. Parking was issue number two. This, the, and I assume you'll hear these things if there's going to be any opposition, but I appreciate getting ahead of them. The second thing was parking. The parking requirements set forth by the code, I believe, are 38, and we provide 39. I may be off by one. We also are willing to, if necessary, include in the covenants, the restrictive covenants for the project, a requirement or a rule that you have to park your car in your garage, or at least in the driveway immediately in front of it. And because there's not a lot of room once you're inside the project. So that's something that we can accommodate. There's no significant increase in traffic onto the, onto the street on a 24th Street. I mean, these are 17 houses, not 70 or 170. And the stacking for exiting the site, I don't know how to get back to the site plan, is internal to the site. It's not like you have 17 people all leaving at 8:30 in the morning to go to work that are going to be already out on the street, on 24, on 24th Street. They're going to stack inside the project, to the extent they stack at all. I think it's highly unlikely. Do people get up at 8:30 and go to work anymore? I'm not even sure that they do in this day and age. But be that as it may, this is the stacking that you'll see at the project. So stormwater, parking, I think those were the primary issues that were raised during the public participation meetings. Oh, and there were some aesthetic concerns. And we all like what we like. That's why there are 32 flavors of ice cream, or at least 32 these days. And we think that we've put together a pretty good project, and I know the architects are very proud of the work they've done, because I think, and again, it's in the eye of the beholder, that what you're going to have in the end is a very aesthetically pleasing project.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Marilyn?
My question is, what have you, did you have a meeting with the Civic Association, and did the Civic Association take a position?
I don't know the answer to that. Hunter?
So we had...
Come on up. This is, this is Hunter Hanks. This is the developer and part of the ownership.
Hello. So we had a meeting with the surrounding community. My name is Robert Hink, the property owner. So we had met with the surrounding community twice. We had addressed their concerns for the, you know, the project, and that's...
When you say the surrounding community, what do you mean?
So just like the, like the neighbors of, you know, the development.
Just a couple of neighbors?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you meet with the Civic Association?
Karen, did we? Yes, we did. I'm sorry.
You'll have to, you'll have to step up and introduce yourself, please.
Yes, we did all the mailouts. We met with the...
Your name, ma'am, please. Your name, please.
Oh, Karen Rivera. We did all the mailouts, and we met with the Civic Association twice via Zoom, and which we got permission from them to do it on a Zoom meeting.
Oh, good. And since, when you had those meetings with the Civic Association, did they provide support or for the project?
As the gentleman said, that they were opposed to, as far as they were concerned about the drainage, they were concerned about the aesthetics, and they were concerned about...
The market?
Yeah, traffic. I don't remember it all.
But you have nothing from them in writing from the Civic Association?
No, we have nothing from them.
That's what I was asking. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just follow up on that? Did you have sign-in sheets, and how many people were at each meeting?
Yes, I had them take a role.
I was looking through here, but I didn't.
Do you have the role?
I don't have it. You guys said it over the minutes.
Yes, that's what we want, the minutes.
The minutes of the public participation meeting.
Yeah, yes.
How many people were in that public participation meeting? And was it also by Zoom?
Correct. Yes, this is the same meeting. We had two of them, but we had one, this was the latest one that we had in September.
The official one?
September 7.
There's only one official one, and that's September, right?
Right, correct. September 7.
All right. And how many people participated in the Zoom?
Six or seven that called in.
No, no, no. If you're going to answer questions, you got to stand up there, please. If you're going to answer questions, you gotta stand up there, please.
It was about six or seven that called into the Zoom.
Okay.
It should be in the package, I believe, that was turned in with the minutes.
Okay, good. That's the number. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can you address guest parking? How much guest parking do you have?
We have five guest parking, including the handicap.
Yeah.
Well, Brad. When we were talking about drainage, the, the area around the property, are those all, the swale, is it all dug-out swale, or is it? So what happens to a lot of these properties, they, they start out with swales that keep rainwater on the property, and then afterwards, it seems like those swales somehow become.
I think that's a question for somebody else, though.
But, yeah, that is. But tell me about the, the drainage on the property, if you could.
Brian?
To address.
My name is Brian Baldwin. I'm with Keith &amp; Associates, civil engineering. So this project, every, all the stormwater is maintained on-site. Most of it is going down through two drainage wells, which are located in the drive aisle. As you said, along the property line, we do have, we're matching the existing grades, and we're making sure no water sheds off-site. We do have swales that will be dug down. If they're properly maintained, they should be able to hold all the water. It's really a thing about maintenance, not letting anything get overgrown. We went through Broward County surface water. We got approval with Johanna and her team at Broward County. So we have an approved permit in hand, showing that the pre-development, we're actually improving it from what was there in existing buildings. So, so yeah, the stormwater is being handled.
Thank you. Marilyn?
Did you ever consider using some pervious surfaces? There's a lot of hardscape in the middle of this project. Did you look at the possibility of using some pervious surfaces?
So the driveway is going to be an asphalt driveway. I think one option was brick pavers.
Yeah.
The county does not allow us to consider that as pervious, even though you do get some percolation through the pavers and through the sand. And then here, where this, all detached area, that's all grass. So the site does have a generous amount of grass, and then all around the perimeter as well is grass.
What about the walkways? Can we do something with the walkways to make them pervious?
That's up to ownership, but it is something we could do. We could convert the concrete sidewalk into a pervious surface.
That would certainly help with the drainage, wouldn't it?
Yes, that would help with the drainage. And like I said, the two drainage wells on-site is a little bit of overkill, but it'll pump a lot of that water. All the water that lands on the roof goes directly to the drainage well. And then also off-site, we will have like a six-inch swale along 24th Street, which will help with any shedding from the road.
Brad, you still have your microphone on? Do you have any more? Jay?
I do see on the site plan that there's paver sidewalks on the east and west side, side of the site. Is that just for interior circulation, walkability on the site, or what are those for?
Pavers on the east and west side of the buildings?
Yeah.
Is that just, is that just for aesthetics?
It says paver sidewalk.
The short answer is, if you want pavers as the walkways, we will do pavers as the walkways. Period.
Okay.
But there's, there's walkways on the east and west portions of the site? For, for what purpose?
Just internal circulation. Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Steve, do you have a comment or a question?
Yes, I, I need more information about the type of construction. I, I saw one liner that just said modular metal construction. To me, that could be anything from shipping containers to mobile home or modular home style, light gauge metal, and I understand they'll be stucco on it, but can anyone speak to that? What, what this is like? Are these prefab modules that are brought in and stacked together or attached or?
No, this is not modular. They'll be built from the ground up. But yes, the exterior look will be, but it'll be a concrete structure, you know, with just all the necessary structural balance requirements.
So would it be poured concrete, concrete block, or?
Traditional construction?
Traditional, yes.
Oh, okay. I saw modular metal construction in, in there somewhere, and, and that threw me off. Okay.
Marilyn?
Referring to something else. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I have a question, and maybe the staff can chime in on this as well. One of the requirements, very specifically for a cluster development, is that the entrance to all the units be accessible and visible from the public right-of-way. I have an issue with the two units in the back. Can you explain to me? I mean, I can, I can, I can understand the side, the side units and the front units, all right? It's a stretch in my mind that you can see the front entrances down that walkway, which is why the walkway is there. It's not for fun, it's, it's there. But I can't see it for the rear units. Can you explain to me why you believe that the back units are accessible and visible from the public right-of-way, which is Southwest 24th Street?
Yvonne Redding, Urban Design and Planning. The code states that the, the units facing the right-of-way should have direct access to the right-of-way.
Correct.
Not the surrounding units that are internal. We prefer the units be faced internal and not facing out towards the right-of-way.
That's not what it says. It says, develop the site so that all units have their principal entrances visible and accessible to Southwest 24th Street. I don't believe that's true. We're not, I'm not talking about the front units. The front units are clearly visible and accessible.
Those are the three, the units, it's, so I should have stated, it's the units that are facing the right-of-way, have the access.
So all the other units don't have to be visible and accessible from the street?
No.
Thank you.
Yes. We're trying to internalize the development.
I, I use that just, whatever it says, I need to know that it's required, it needs it.
Everybody get all the questions out of the way? Well?
Can staff maybe share high level the intent of the RD-15 zoning and what that is meant to promote? What type of development that's meant to promote generally? Because cluster falls within RD-15 as a conditional use, which is why this is here today.
Correct. So the RD-15 zoning district was created for single-family and duplex-type developments, and clusters were included in the code several years ago to give an additional option, because townhouses are not available in this zoning district. Clusters were given as an alternate option to increase density in the neighborhood, to give a little more freedom to design, where you don't have just two units side by side and driveways. So the cluster was included in the zoning district, and we made it a conditional use because we felt like you are now changing the dynamics of a neighborhood that was only single-family and duplex, and it would give the public opportunity to speak and have some input.
So the intent of RD-15 is to promote a single-family neighborhood feel and look from the public realm?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Can I go back to my original question? I'm still not 100% sure. Is the requirement that all units which face the public right-of-way have to be clearly visible and accessible from the public right-of-way?
Correct.
But all the other units don't need to be accessible?
Not, not the ones that aren't, not, not the ones that are in the back. We want you to, when you're walking down 24th Street, you see the front entrance of a unit, and there's a walkway, like you would see a single-family residence or a duplex with that front entrance and that walkway. The other internal units don't need to be highlighted or marked or accessible because they're internal.
Or visible.
Or visible. And they're not visible.
Okay, all right.
All right, anyone else? I hopefully have two quick questions of the applicant, and it's probably for you, young man, from Keith &amp; Associates. Will you briefly speak to the circulation internally of how the garbage truck gets in there and out of there? And also, I'm curious to know whether mail is being delivered to each door, or if there's a central postal area? Because there are people that, when it rains, will want to just drive up there, get out, park, do whatever. But just basically internal circulation is my question.
Good question. Here you can see the garbage truck, the dumpster is located.
No, I know where it is. I've just, is it all one-way internally?
No, it'll be two-way. It's a 24-foot drive aisle, and the dump, the truck will come in here and turn around. It can, it can actually, the truck can make a whole circulation throughout the entire site, and that's shown through this vehicle tracking plan. It's, it is tight for the truck, but it, it can make it based off the radiuses.
Okay. And as far as postal?
I don't know that of, per unit.
Per unit?
Yes.
Thank you. Marilyn, I see your light back on.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Okay. I turned everybody else's off. All right.
Mr. Chair, one, one more thing, if I might.
Sherri, go ahead.
Do you have a picture? I thought there was a, an actual photograph of the neighborhood showing the houses around it. Is that in the?
You mean like an aerial or something?
Yeah.
Is this one?
Yeah, that's it. So would you describe for me everything that's immediately adjacent? I'm very interested in the pink units. I don't know if that's south or, or what. But describe the units all around that parcel? Yeah, what are those?
Those look like duplexes.
I believe so.
These ones over here?
Down below, on the bottom.
Yeah, the, the.
I think they're condos from looking at them.
So multi-unit?
Yes, ma'am.
Multi-unit there. And then to my left of the parcel, are those single-family homes or those duplexes? What's immediately adjacent, right there?
Duplexes as well.
Duplexes as well. And across the street?
Single-family homes.
Across the street, on this side, we've got duplexes. This side, we have multifamily. And to the other side, it looks like an empty lot. Is that so?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So there is one house there, there's an empty lot between like these two.
When I drove it to, can I speak here?
Yeah.
When I drove it today, I thought there was a single-family house to the east of it.
So directly to the east of one, and then there's a lot right next to that.
There's an empty lot next to that, and then another single-family home.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so immediately adjacent, where the cluster of trees is.
So there is a single-family home there, located about right in here, and then there's another lot.
And buffering that would be this patch of trees?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Is the intent, sorry, one more comment. Is the intent to add a gate at some point and to make it private, like blocked off, or?
We didn't have any intention of adding a gate, but that's something we could do if it's required.
Okay.
I don't think it's required. All right, seeing everybody's microphones off, we're going to open this up to the public for comment. I have one person signed up to speak, Ted and Sarah. Did you sign up? Okay. Ted? Huh? I'm sorry? Okay. I'm sorry, you're the president of the association? Hang on, I'm just trying to figure out how much time to allocate to your time at the podium. So if you're representing an association?
Yes.
I'm going to give you five minutes.
Thank you.
All right?
Nancy Long.
Thank you.
First Chair Vice, First Chair President, River Oaks Civic Association. And I brought a little map of our neighborhood. It's outlined, it's outlined in red. At the top, you're going to see the aisles, the citrus aisles. And then below that is River Oaks. It's like medium-income homes to high-end. We have high-end income homes in there, La Preserve, Georgiana Oaks, several other little, little areas that, a lot of them are, let's see, citrus aisles, La Preserve, Georgiana Oaks, and Marina Landings. And these are all million-dollar homes that are. Over in the area where they want to put these is over in this little cluster down here. This is Lauderdale Marine. This neighborhood only has one street to get out, is 15th Avenue. This neighborhood, the Marine Center, and all of this traffic uses 15th Avenue. Okay, these are all single-family homes, and I kind of want to give you a little history. We're essentially divided in those three areas. The citrus aisles from Davie Road down to Southwest 17th Avenue, and 17th Avenue to State Road 84, along Southwest 9th Avenue. The third area is where the submitted those cluster homes is right south of the Marina Basin. It's right at the end of 18th Avenue and Southwest 24th Street. The majority of these residents have, that live east and west of 15th Avenue, uses, uses 15th Avenue inner and exit this area. Currently, the amount of traffic that accesses the main entrance to and from this neighborhood, it's over 1,000 trucks a day in and out, with big trucks hauling boats, with gas trucks, with semi-trucks. It's a very busy road, very busy area. The cut-through traffic is hectic, and Southwest 24th Street is the only way to get out to Southwest 15th Avenue. Southwest 15th Avenue services all of our single-family developments, of which I already talked about, that over 300 residents just in that one little cluster area where we live. The flooding in this area, River Oaks started coordinating with stormwater plan with Craven Thompson Associates in 2013 through 2015, because we had so many floods. The stormwater preserve was approved during this time around 2016, and they did the layouts with the, where the flood occurred. We put pins all over where the worst part was. The worst part is west of Southwest 24th Street with this cluster home. We have floods that go up over our waistline. We're still having them. The city came in and put in a stormwater plan, and on Southwest 24th Street, there's a five-foot round drain pipe that comes from Edgewood down 15th Avenue under Southwest 24th Street, west to Southwest 19th Avenue. Under the road is also our water lines, 12-inch, 15-inch pipes that service our drain system. There's nowhere for water to go on that street because it's full of pipes and everything under it. There's some drains along that, but they're maintained, and it's their own, their own drain system. I've spent a lot of time looking back, looking for how all this happened, how we got, how we got zoned for cluster homes. If you go back to 2017, the city changed our neighborhood to cluster homes without letting our neighborhood know about it. It was not in any of our submit meetings, many of our civic meetings, and it was the city of Fort Lauderdale Civic Association that voted to make our neighborhood cluster home ready. We do not, we do not like them because of how many homes there are that engulfed it. And this one specifically, we had a lot of issues with, with the drainage. Their drainage system is a, it goes down under our, 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 under our groundwater area, and it holds, I don't know, 150, 250 gallons of water. We asked them if they had storm drains, scuppers off of their buildings. They said, no, they do not. They said that the water is going to go centered to the middle, right next to the garbage container. If you go west, where this drain system is going to be, is our acella, our, our waterway that feeds. The Ocelia, the Ocela water line, this is their cluster home here. This is where our water goes underground and goes out west to where our water system is for our city. For them to have a storm drain under next to their garbage bin, one garbage container service in 17 homes is crazy. The development company and the city for a lot of documents, which I've gone through are very informative, but they are not up to date. The DRC, submittal form of August in 219, 2019, still has the previous owners' names of 18 homes, and 22 pages of comments that I can't find any responses to. Yet the developer is submitting permits as individual permits in a backdoor sort of way, with no documents of attachment to this R 1906-2. The presentation for the landscape was rejected by the neighborhood because of removal of so many trees. They applied for a permit, came in on a weekend and put up a fence, removed the trees, and And the permit for landscape and fence has yet to be picked up and inspections of all this has not been done. There's still open permits and they cleared the lot. There's only a few.
We have to ask you to wrap it up in the next 30 seconds, please.
There's only a few trees around the perimeter. And, um, I have met with Christopher Cooper, Joe Pasquillo, Ben Rogers, voicing our safety concerns regarding this development and how it's affecting our living and the future of our, our neighborhood. I've sent letters, I've, I've written letters to our governor, our state representative, I've, um, FEMA, our, the marine, the marina. I've sent them to all of our, um, people that we were trying to reach out to help save our neighborhood from overdevelopment. And if there's a, if there's an incident, we can't get out of our driveways. When they had an MOT, people from the marina would not let us out of our driveways. They wouldn't let us get home. And have you ever smelled a, a burning boat that happens in the marina? I mean, that happens. We can't get out because they're all leaving and they won't let us out of our driveway. So it's a mess. It's a mess. And it's not organized. It's not coordinated. We're not happy with it. So the plans are very vague. They don't have a lot of information. It needs a lot of work on them. The drainage system is not sufficient. They have, they're using our wire chain-link fences. They're not even putting up a fence around the property. It's, they got a two-foot swell on the edge of the, it's horrible. It's just, we don't, we don't approve it. We don't like it.
I have a.
I think, I think Mary has a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, can you just put your map up again? Is the southern boundary of your association 24th Street in this area?
It's State Road 84.
It's State Road 84. It goes all the way down to State Road 84. Okay, thank you.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see, go ahead, Marilyn.
Just, just it. Uh, so, uh, has the Civic Association taken a position on this?
Yes, we do not approve of it. Um, we're not against cluster homes. This one doesn't fit in our community. We have no square box homes like this. They presented a different drawing with, uh, arched, with, uh, nice roofs that matched the roofs in the neighborhood. Then they came back and said, no, we're building this. We asked the developer if he'd help us make sidewalks to help walking because there's no sidewalks on 24th Street. He said, no, I'm paying the city permit fees. They can take care of all that. We're not doing anything. So we said, okay. You know, so basically 24th Street is, is so busy. The school buses are there. The schools are full. It just doesn't make sense for that little neighborhood to fill it up with this many houses when we don't, we can't, we can't service it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I do have one question. How many people are in your, how many people voted in your association that you're saying they're against it?
Well, we've got several here plus, um, I'd say, I'd say 25 people.
Did you take an official vote?
Um, I probably, I, I, no, I don't have it written down, no. And they only, they wouldn't do a regular meeting. They, we, they insisted they do a Zoom meeting.
Right.
And our neighborhood's older people. They don't have computers.
Okay.
They mail all of our stuff back and forth and just talk and.
So did you guys have a meeting and talk about it?
Yes.
And then vote on it?
Yes.
Okay. How many were in favor? How many were against?
I think about 12 were, um, no, no comment and about another 15 were basically against it because it's in that area. I mean, the other areas, there's, there's more access to getting out of the neighborhood.
Do you have a roll?
But that's a call they're set.
Do you have a roll call or anything that we can look at?
Um, I can look in the minute meetings. It's probably in there, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to be heard on this?
Hello, everybody. How are you doing? My name is Ted and Sarah. I am a 60-plus years resident of River Oaks. In my opinion, if anybody, if you made a site visit or even looked at this thing, you cannot vote yes and approve this, uh, this building. It is, it doesn't fit in with our neighborhood whatsoever. I mean, they're using words like a main street, the entrance from main street. 24th Street is a little skinny street with no sidewalks, hardly any lighting on there. To calling that their main street entrance is just ridiculous. It's not even close to fitting in with what our neighborhood has. Um, we're just losing the neighborhood. There's already Marina Landing, which is on 15th Avenue, just a little bit north of 24th Street. That is going to be 42 individual homes just right around the corner from that. That's already been approved and it's, it's, it's actually starting. And now they want to put this thing in there. I mean, this is just, I mean, here's their design. That's it. They just built the square. We had Ms. Toothaker with her beautiful designer presentation and, and just how it's fitting in with that part of the neighborhood. And we get this. It's like, it's, we just can't have this in River Oaks. It, it's, uh, doesn't fit in with the canopy, with everything that we stand for. I mean, we, we gotta keep our neighborhoods. They're just, we're just losing them piece by piece. And something like this, I mean, I was looking for the razor wire because it looks like a prison. But, uh, it's, it just is, is not the right place, not the right time, and not the right look. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard on this? Hearing and seeing none. Uh, I will close the public portion of this meeting. Counselor, you asked for a rebuttal if you would like. Now is the time.
Just a not very long, I, I, I fully appreciate, I, I mean, fully appreciate that nobody wants more density in their neighborhood, period. I mean, I appreciate that. This happens to be a property that's already zoned for some density that I, I don't know what the process was or if people were not notified. I can't speak to that, but it was zoned back in '06 for, at some additional density. We're not maxing the density out. It's 17 units. And in looking at the surrounding, at the surrounding uses, uh, Ms. McCartney asked about surrounding uses, which is the right question. There's multifamily. You heard complaints about the industrial uses that are, I don't know, a quarter of a mile north from the subject property. So it is a diversely-used part of the world, multifamily, industrial. If we had to plan it all over again, we might not have put all those things in the same place, but that's what's there and that's how it's zoned. I appreciate the concerns about stormwater. We've addressed them. I appreciate the concerns about parking and traffic. We've addressed them. And as the, as the board well knows, that the ordinance speaks to what considerations should be taken, should be thought about when making a decision about a, a level three. So we're happy to answer any other questions. I think you've seen that we've been very reasonable in trying to accommodate with conditions and the concerns that this board might have, whether it be pervious services or other considerations. We're happy to talk about and consider them.
Mary?
But, I'm sorry, but.
No, no.
It's zoned for, it's zoned for some density. We're putting in some density. Otherwise, the property, um, well, substrate that. We would appreciate your favorable consideration.
Mary, do you have a question for him?
No, I, I had a comment.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mary?
Can I go ahead? Okay. So as I drove through this today, and, um, and I do drive through this neighborhood frequently. So my concern as I drove through this today, and I, I think if you put that picture, that Google picture up or whatever it was that you had, you'll see it. Yes, there is some single, there is some multifamily on the block south of this. It's not on 24th Street. There are some duplexes, so maybe you count that. But as far as the Marina Oaks development is on 25th, um, not right adjacent. And yes, Lauderdale Marine has their facility several blocks to the north of this and west, but on the water, as you all know. So my concern, as I looked at this today, was neighborhood compatibility. You're coming up to what are, a single-family home after single-family home, and you're putting a 17-unit cluster home on what, just over an acre of property. Um, and, and I, that's just, regardless of the zoning, I'm concerned about the neighborhood compatibility. And, um, I don't, I, I just want to put that out there. I think that's a really important element for us to consider. As we look at our neighborhoods and what's happening, uh, as, as, as we see areas where this is coming in and it fits in with other cluster homes of the same, if it was on 25th, if it was back west of there where some of that development is. But this is an area that, in my mind, is primarily single-family, that is, is, it's not compatible.
Anybody else, like Jay? Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, wait, Jay. Marilyn had her light on.
You go ahead, Marilyn.
Thank you, Jay. Um, I, I find it very concerning that having met with the, uh, the association and the neighbors and having had them express their, their, uh, their concerns about the, the ambiance, the look of this project vis-à-vis what the community is about and is, my, even my Google search down the street shows that this would be really out of keeping. This design would be really out of keeping. Well, it's lovely. I mean, in another place, perhaps in Miami, it would be, uh, it would be appropriate. But unfortunately, we are not a design review board and we have no ability to, uh, we have no ability to require a particular design. But I think you would have been well-advised to try and accommodate the, the community's desire for a more, shall we call it a traditional look, a more of a, a, a single-family look, which I'm sure with your expertise, you could have worked that out, at least in the front project, you know, with some sloped roofs and some, some different color. Um, and I, I find that very unfortunate. I also, uh, I'm concerned about, just take a look at this drawing, right? The one that's right in front of us here, that one? I find that deceiving because if that's a shot down the sidewalk way, correct, down the sidewalk way? All those lovely trees, they're on somebody else's property. That should have a fence and it will have a chain-link fence, according to the drawings, right on that little white spot there. And that's all there is back there. Uh, there, there will be a couple of pigeon palm, palms in that little green area. I would have preferred to have it shown correctly. Uh, and to me, that shows very clearly that the drainage on the side is an issue to me. Now, you, we've talked about taking that concrete walkway and making it pervious so that we would improve the drainage on the side. Because that little, that little strip of green on the side, that's not going to cut it. That's not going to, just, I know that area. It floods. Okay. Even for you, for you guys, it's not good. So a, at a minimum, I would think that that would definitely be something that would need it to be accomplished, to take that hard surface and make it so that the rainwater would, uh, would percolate down into the soil there. Uh, and again, I, I just find it very unfortunate that you did not seek to accommodate the, the desire of the community for an, an image that was more community-compatible. That's all I have to say.
Jay?
So I don't know the history of the site, but just in looking at an aerial, it looks like Southwest 25th Street probably continued west on the south side of the site. And then at some point, maybe when the project to the south was developed, it was vacated, um, and to, to this property and to the southern neighbor. Um, so what's resulted is in a really deep lot, it's three, over 300 feet deep. Whereas, you know, the, all the single-family homes and duplexes to the north and in this area are probably, you know, the standard 100 to 150-foot depth. So I do think the uniqueness of the site with the, um, with the RD-15 zoning, you know, requires some sort of cluster, um, considering that if 25th still existed today, you know, they would from, they would be able, as of right, to get probably 12 units, 12 duplex, front-facing, street-front-facing duplexes with a 180-foot width and 300-foot depth, um, or 150-foot depth for each half of the block. Um, so I mean, I, I just think that, you know, the intent, as Yvonne was saying, of the RD-15, which I, I live in one of those zoning designations, is, is for like a single-family, front-facing neighborhood. Cluster is there to help make sense of some of these irregularly-shaped lots. But it's, there still has to be some semblance of single-family feel to the development for it to fit in the neighborhood and be congruent with the RD-15 designation. So with that, like, you know, there's four or five guest spots. No, there's nowhere else for any, nowhere else for anyone else to park. In an RD-15 with clusters, you know, if you have your family over, um, you have, you could fit three or four people just on your one driveway. Now, if one person has a party in this cluster, that's all the guest parking. If any of the other 16 homes have a party, those cars are out on the street, blocking the sidewalk that you built. So it's just, it's, it's just too much, I think, on this site. I think maybe 12 to 13 units, 12 to 14 units would probably be more appropriate. And I think there needs to be particular attention on the front-facing experience from 24th so that when people are walking by in the single-family portion of the neighborhood, it feels like a single-family development from the streets, the street side. That's something that I would be in favor of. And I would also be in favor of, um, giving the applicants an opportunity to work more closely with the neighbors to fine-tune the, the proposal.
Marilyn?
Oh, I, I, yes, I agree with Jay. Since I have my light on, I agree with Jay 100%.
Turn your light off.
No, 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 no. I agree with him 100% that, you know, I think, I think there's, uh, it is a cluster development. It is zoned for cluster development. I mean, that, that is, that is reality. But when you are designing it and you're trying to work it into a neighborhood, I think if you just took a little more time and came back with a, a different design, a more friendly-facing design, at least on the front, that, that would go a long way towards making me, uh, support this project. Yes, thank you, Jay. I agree.
Mary?
So let me, let me just say, I, rather than, there are a couple of ways we could go here. We could just make a motion to deny and that ends it, or we can defer it. I, I'm just kind of looking for some guidance as to what people think is the best way to go. I think there are a number of issues that have been articulated that would have to be addressed to actually have this be a successful project. Brad, I'm sorry.
I, no, it's okay. I think that the applicant would have to ask to defer, to tune up the project.
Or we should ask the applicant if they would be receptive to deferral to try to soften up the edges.
Correct. And, and just so I can give some input, we have a cluster, a cluster home, uh, project in Victoria Park. And, uh, I was on the board way back when. Were you on with me back then? I don't know. I was on the board.
Was it a good decision or a bad decision? I don't want you to know.
I don't know. It was my decision. No, I think it was a good decision. Um, it was a, it's a, a cluster home that is behind, um, US-1. You remember where the bank building used to be? They took down that bank building. They built a smaller bank in the front. They took the parking lot in the back. And it's, it almost looks like single-family homes. They're not single-family homes. It's a cluster. It's a, it's a cluster home, uh, but they almost look like single-family homes. And it's like, to me, I don't know if it's called Victoria Park Muse or something like that. To me, it is, that's really an example of cluster homes that work. And again, we're not sitting here and judging what, my, my aesthetic might not be yours and, and it might not be theirs and whatever. You know, and it is what it is, but when I look at this, I think that there can be probably something that, um, that is more compatible with the neighborhood. That's what I'm saying. So I, I think that, well, if you're receptive to a, deferring it, I think that if you go back and tweak it, I think, and speak with the, um, the members of the, the public that spoke and that, uh, that committee, I, I think that you'd be able to, to put something there that would be, benefit you guys and benefit the neighborhood. That's my two cents.
So how do we, are you going to ask?
So Sherry's got her light on. Let's, let's address all the comments on the board, then we'll turn to the applicant and see where their, their heads at. So Sherry?
So if given and willing, um, given the opportunity to kind of, you know, go back to the drawing board and meet with, uh, the neighborhood again and, and do some sort of redesign. And I would agree with, uh, Jay's observation that maybe, um, the depth creates too great a density in order to, for it to be compatible. But he also brought up parking, and I think that is as critical as even the drainage issue. When you're going to have that many units and only have the best of two spaces because one's in a garage, people coming over. I can't think of anything that would frustrate that neighborhood more possibly than flooding is having cars up and down the street all the time. So I would, my advice would be to consider that as well if you're so inclined to, to, uh, take this back and go back to the drawing board.
Mike, if I could just want to have one more thing?
Go ahead, Jay.
I think it was like six months ago, we, we were all, you know, out in our homes and we had a historic flooding that we'd never had before. And I had people from River Oaks and Edgewood texting, "Help, help, like, the water is up to my shoulder." Like, "Help, get us out." Like, "That's how bad the flooding is in this area." So not one thing that I know about duplexes and, and these cluster home developments is that, you know, you mentioned, oh, as long as they maintain this, you know, that it should be able to manage the, the flooding, which based on your calc, I'm sure is just a normal rainstorm, not what we had, which could be even worse. Um, but it shouldn't be that tight. You know, it should, it shouldn't be that tight because they don't take care of, of, they don't maintain drains. I guarantee you, they're not going to maintain the drain. So it should, it just shouldn't be that tight.
Well, okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak before we approach the applicant as to whether they are considering, whether they would consider deferrals? Does anybody else have anything more to say? So?
I just, I just think that the neighborhood compatibility issue is an issue. I think there are things that can be done to mitigate that, and some of them have been articulated. But as you're looking at this. But as you're looking at this project, it is a definite neighborhood. I mean, it's.
I think that has been articulated by several people several times.
And I, if I might add?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Quickly, quickly. Architectural style. Cluster buildings shall be designed of an architectural style compatible with and complementary to addition, addition, adjacent structures. Architectural features are considered in the context of the site. I mean, clearly.
So, counselor?
Yes, sir.
I think, I think this board is prepared to put it to a vote unless you want to take a, a, a reset and maybe explore some of the concerns that the board has, some of the concerns that the public has. Your call.
Thank you, I appreciate the consideration, I do. Um, what I, what I've talked to the client about and what I think you have touched upon is replacing an aesthetic preference with that of the property owners, with respect. This board, with respect, has the code to honor and that the requirements of the code are satisfied, i.e. the number of parking spaces comply with the code, the stormwater compliance complies with the code, the density complies with the code, the setbacks require, comply with the code. What we're talking about is an aesthetic preference. And to be, to be honest, we could build whatever, I mean, again, who knows what someone wants? But to say that this property is got to be consistent with or compatible with the single family houses in the area is a nice idea, but it is literally a sand wedge away from park-style apartments. The back door to the south, or to the north are, are apartments. There, two blocks to the south, I'm sorry, two blocks to the south is a marina. So I appreciate, I do, I do appreciate the consideration. We could come in here in two months, three months with completely redrawn, uh, completely redrawn elevations, and as you pointed out, this board is not a design review board. It is not an architectural standards committee. It is, it is charged with evaluating the code against the proposal and making a decision based upon those elements. I know you know that, I'm not trying to be patronizing about it, but I am trying to remind you that substituting the neighbors or anyone else's aesthetic preferences is not the place of this board, with respect. So, because you start trying to chase a rabbit that will never please everybody, never. Well, I want the roof pitch to be different. Someone mentioned something about roof pitches. That was the prior owner. And what Ms. Redding has pointed out is that the prior owner and the prior developer with the prior elevations that they were referencing would never be consistent with today's code. Never. The heights were too high, the, there were too many that were facing 24th Street that you couldn't have in a cluster. So we have worked diligently with staff and with the DRC to come up with a plan that is consistent with the code, and I submit to you that that is what should guide your decision on approval of this project. And so I definitely appreciate the consideration of, of proposing a deferral, um, but I'm afraid we have to politely and respectfully decline that, that suggestion.
That's fine, didn't want to impose it on you, just.
I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. Thank you.
Hang on, hang on. Mary's got her light on.
Oh, I do, I want to make a motion then.
Oh, okay, thank you, sir. So you are not in the interest of deferral?
I.
Just for the record.
Okay.
Jay?
Well, Mary was first, um, but.
She wants to make a motion. You have a comment or?
I was going to ask staff a question.
Okay.
I'll ask the question while you're walking because you save some time. Can you, can you outline any, I mean, yes, like 17 units, you know, 15 units per acre allows for 19 technically, but can you outline just what are some of the neighborhood compatibility requirements that we have under our purview to consider with respect to approving or denying this request?
So technically, cluster developments are considered single family homes. They're similar to townhomes, they're single family homes. So these are two-story, single-family home development in the zoning district. Prior to this being rezoned to RD 15 in 1997 and the cluster type units included in the RD 15 code in 1997, this area was zoned R2, which was still duplex. So in 1997, the cluster was added, and as you can see, if you could see the Google picture, there are apartment complexes that are two-story, but they're unit upon unit surrounding to the south and to the west of this. So these are, these are two-story apartment complexes, sorry, two-story apartment complex, and that entity is also over here. So similar to those, they're the two-story height. So architecturally, maybe it doesn't match the single family homes with the pitched roof, but height, it's similar, density, it's less than these two areas. So I don't know how to.
Did you follow, or may I ask a question? So I think that the question really goes to compatibility as it is a criteria for us to consider, and what does that mean? What does compatibility means? Because I think there is a distinction between saying, hey, I think it's ugly, and is it compatible with the neighborhood? So other than the phrase, um, that the neighboring compatibility criteria, um.
Complementary.
Yeah, it, all developments to be compatible with and preserve the character and integrity of the adjacent neighborhoods.
So the single family dwelling, it's similar to a single family dwelling.
Yvonne?
Yes?
May I suggest that you read directly from the code? If, if, if not, then I can do it.
Yes, because I don't have.
Yeah, I think that's better, right? So, um, we want to go to 4725, um, 3, and we go to A, and then we go to 3E for a description of what neighborhood compatibility is. And so there it states that the development will be compatible with and preserve the character and integrity of adjacent neighborhoods. The development shall include improvements or modifications either onsite or within the public rights away to mitigate adverse impacts such as traffic, noise, odors, shadows, scale, visual nuisances, or other similar adverse effects to adjacent neighborhoods. These improvements or modifications may include, but shall not be limited to, the placement or orientation of buildings and entryways, parking areas, buffer yards, alteration of building mass, and the addition of landscaping walls or boards to ameliorate such impacts. Roadway adjustments, traffic control, devices or mechanisms, and access restrictions may be required to control traffic flow or divert traffic as needed to reduce or eliminate development-generated traffic on neighborhood streets. So, um, you know.
Thank you very much.
That's what it is.
Can I speak, sir? Or who's next?
Uh, Mary's had her light on for a while, but I know, I think she's still waiting to make a motion, so.
That's I, A, sorry.
Before, before you make a motion, can I speak? Yeah. Can I answer that? I don't think we're talking about neighborhood compatibility here. I mean, scale, it's two stories. You know, I mean, there's, it's compatible with the scale of the neighborhood. We're not talking about that. We're talking about, I'm talking about, there is a specific requirement in the cluster development that's set, and you put it right here in the staff report. It says, "Architectural style. Cluster buildings shall be designed of an architectural style compatible with and complimentary to the adjacent structures." I'm, I'm just reading from the, the, the document that I've been given. Um, so I think it is perfectly, it's not a, not a question of compatibility, it's a question of meeting the requirements for the cluster developments. The con, the concept of the cluster development was to integrate into a single family residential area, developments that were of a slightly higher density and developments that were, uh, could accommodate some of the, could have more flexibility and accommodate some of the sites, but not at the, uh, not to the detriment of, of the character of the community. So I'm, I'm just would like to make that point that it's not, I'm not referring to the compatibility, uh, to the neighborhood compatibility issues, I'm referring to the requirements of a cluster development, that it is supposed to be, um, it is supposed to be, uh, complimentary to the neighborhood. And, and, and speaking to the developers' question, certainly we're not an architectural review board. We're not telling you what it should be. We're not telling you what should have big roofs, it should be pink, it should be purple. That is not our role. What our role is to look at this project and say, is it compatible with the neighborhood? And the neighborhood is very clear that it's not, and I'm pretty clear. I mean, I, you know, I can see it, it is not compatible. It, not that it's not beautiful, I mean, no offense, truly, but, you know, I can't, I can't support it, I'm sorry.
Well, and, and just, just real quick, and then I'm hoping you're going to make your motion.
Oh, I am.
Going, going to what you're saying, Marilyn?
Yeah.
Is that this project should look like the, they almost look like storage containers to the west of this property, which are rentals or, I don't even know what it is, but neighborhood compatibility, so it looks like everything else around there. It would, it would look like the Heinz 57 project because there's nothing that's.
With respect, Mr. Chairman, I'm an architect myself.
Okay.
And I can very clearly see, I, as I would look down this street, that there is definitely an architectural, uh, uh, ambiance, vocabulary, okay?
Understood.
The, the duplexes, you know, they may be an, uh, an aberration in that whole area. Um, and I am not, as an architect, telling them what to design, or as a member of this board, I am certainly not doing that. But I'm telling them that as architects, look around you, and I'm sure that you could figure out a design that is more compatible with the existing vernacular of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Jay?
Um, so, and I, I just pulled up the code and.
Yes, thank you.
In 4752, intent and purpose of each district, um, number three, RD 15 is intended to provide areas within the city for single-family detached dwellings and for duplex units or two-family residences where two units are attached or semi-attached. The RD 15 district permits single-family dwelling units, including zero lot line dwellings and cluster dwellings, designed in a manner that is compatible and complimentary to the surrounding area. This provides for a more efficient use of land resources by allowing a modification, modification of yards to provide for innovative site design on lots, which because of their size cannot be used otherwise. So that's kind of what I was saying, is that I think this is a unique sized lot that justifies the development of a cluster, um, because it wouldn't make sense to just have four homes facing the front of the street. But the, the complimentary to the neighborhood means that, you know, all of these, everything surrounding it on that street is a front-facing home. It has a front-facing feel to it, a neighborhood feel to it. This is a residential neighborhood. This isn't Weston where we have separate neighborhoods from each other. This is Fort Lauderdale. So I, going back to what I said, I just think that there needs to be, like, what, what you've presented, I'm not commenting on whether or not the style is good or bad, I'm commenting on the fact that it looks like the back of a wall. It doesn't look like the front of a house facing the street and, and therefore is not complimentary to the rest of that street and the ones that's perpendicular to it. So that's, that's the comment, I wanted to make that distinction, and it is in the code and it is under our, our purview to consider that.
Thanks, Jay. Mary, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I do, and I'll just start by saying, before I make it, two words, uh, three words, maybe four. I remembered the development of the neighborhood compatibility, uh, portion of the code, it has been considered a very important part of our code, and so I'm going to move, uh, to adopt a resolution denying the application of a site plan level, uh, 3, case number PL, PLR 19062, based, um, on the findings, the following findings of fact, neighborhood compatibility, cluster home, um, uh, cluster home portion of the code, um, and the portion that Jay just read. Um, and the board, um, this is part of the motion that I have here from you, the board hereby finds that the application does not meet the following standards and requirements of the ULDR and criteria for the proposed use, the ones I just cited. And is that, am I doing that okay, Sherry?
Uh, yes, just some more to add. So it's, um, 47253A, EIA of the code, um, and that is the neighborhood compatibility. And then Jay's section, I forgot, Jay, remind me.
Sorry, that was, uh, 4752A3.
And in your statement, uh, just to briefly summarize, it fails to meet the intent of, uh, the RD 15 as it's not designed in a way, fill in the blank. Jay?
I, I didn't make the motion.
Oh, no, I'm just trying to make the record because under, um, 166.033, uh, Mary needs a little help to establish the basis for the denial.
I'm sorry, I don't have that part, I have the neighborhood compatibility.
I was just saying that it requires that the, the clusters be compatible and complimentary to the surrounding area.
And it fails to meet that, correct?
Correct.
Fails to meet that?
I can't tell Mary.
No, 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 not, I'm, I'm just asking you and then.
That's the word, it fails to meet that section.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we just have the sections.
And then is that based on the testimony, testimony you heard tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Marilyn Mamano.
And all the evidence submitted as well to the board.
And I will remind this board that a vote of yes means that you're denying the application.
And it's based on all the evidence you got today, right? All the paper documentation, including the staff report, everything you received, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any more discussion before we take a vote? Patrick?
I don't know that, you know, it's necessary, it seems like everyone wants to vote, you know, but I just, one comment was made about the landscaping that was not on this property. Per the plan, all those trees are on this development. Uh, so it looks like they are landscaping the whole border around it, and if I had my way, I would request that they put in a six-foot privacy fence at least for, around the property for the other neighbors so they're not looking into multiple units, but let's call the vote.
Okay, any other comments before we take the vote? Fire away.
Okay. Ms. Furtick?
Uh, yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
No.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Mamano?
Yes.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
No.
So the item is denied. It fails.
Yes, Leslie, I just wanted to make sure you got the correct code section. Do you have it there?
I have the recording.
Okay, all right, just make sure, 47253A, E.
If you want to tell me now, go ahead.
Yeah, A, E, I.
47.
47253A, EIA, and then, um, Jay's subsection as well.
Subsection.
And Jay's own, you could listen to it.
Yeah, okay.
All right, we're going to move on. Folks, we'll ask you to clear the, uh, the area, please, so we can finish our work and leave as well.
I, I'm requesting a denial of the next one because I made a whole lot of changes and staff has.
That's fine. Do we need to vote on that, Sherry?
What is the next one? I.
Do we need to vote on the next one? To defer it?
Uh, well, yes, because it's already on the agenda, but I've made a lot of changes and staff has to look at it.
Let's, let's move things along there, folks.
Can we just, can I just ask what it is?
Um, so it's the, it's the neighborhood participation, so I just saw some antiquated language and stuff that I think needs to be corrected. For example, like, what is a neighborhood association that the city recognizes that needs to be defined, otherwise it could be anything? So there's actually a website for that, so I just wanted to add some more clarity to those kinds of things.
Okay, move to defer?
Let me introduce the case first.
Oh, sorry.
Case number UDPT 23007, request to defer to the November 15, 2023 planning and zoning board meeting. Mary, would you like to make a motion?
So moved to defer.
Second?
Second.
Second by Patrick McTeague. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Case number UDPL 23001. Uh, Jim, I guess you're the start of this one.
I'm being bad again, I'm sorry. I'm representing, I'm requesting a, a defer on that one too. The reason for that, it's.
Case number UDPL 23001.
One second, one second. Until November?
Uh, yes, I'm requesting it. Um, the reason being is because, um, this area encompasses an area that is, uh, close to the airport.
The reason being is because this area encompasses an area that is close to the airport, and that, there's some federal law, I represent the airport as well. So there's some federal law that's involved, such as studies that may be required, it's called Part 150. It's a noise compatibility sort of thing. So we're not supposed to pass land use plans without it going through an analysis under, evaluating the airport's aspect of it. There's certain uses that are not compatible, and so we want to make sure that they're not authorized by virtue of this land use plan amendment. So we just want to make sure we talk with outside counsel that also represents the airport, that specializes in airport law. I also do it, but they're more specialist than me, so that's why I'm asking for a deferral of this.
Move to defer.
Good, so defer to November 15, 2023?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to defer till the November meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. And any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none?
Just for the record, the motion was made by Ms. Fertig and seconded by Ms. Mamanu. Thank you.
All right. Case number UDPL-23002. Now you're up, Mr. Hetzel.
Now I'm up. Sorry about that. Good evening, Jim Hetzel, Principal Planner at the Development Services Department. This item, case UDPL-23002, is an amendment to our land use element in our comprehensive plan, specifically to change the floor area ratio for the transit-oriented development land use designation. What we found is there's a conflict between our ULDR and our comp plan, where the comp plan says 2.5 for floor area ratio, where our zoning allows three for floor area ratio. So we're just bringing that into compliance, so they're consistent. That's basically it. So I'll take questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Why did we go that way and not the other way?
Well, for typical, for transit-oriented development, you want to have a range of certain floor area ratio parameters that allow for more dense projects to support transit. The lower you go, that's the opposite direction for transit-oriented. You actually should go higher. Minimum should be three, and it could go all the way up to, you know, five at times for FARs, to allow for that type of development to support transit.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions regarding this case? Somebody want to make a motion?
Do we have anybody that wants to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't know. I just saw all these knowledgeable people here.
There's a lot of lawyers sitting here. You want to hear from a bunch of lawyers? Huh?
I'm sorry, everybody.
Well, just, just to keep everything, I'm going to open up the item for public. If there's anybody wishes to speak, seeing none, we'll close it, bring it back to the board for discussion or a vote.
Okay. Well, moved.
You're on a roll.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Who was second? Patrick?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Communication to the city?
Yeah, what happened to that?
Nothing.
Oh, okay.
Can I speak to that, since I was there?
Sure. Sure.
The commission heard our communication and asked me to, to speak to it, and I, I tried to explain what the issue was, that some of our members had requested that they be able to participate in meetings virtually. And there was a very interesting discussion, very interesting discussion, and it had to do with, you know, the future versus the past, and how many people could participate that way. But the bottom line was that the mayor instructed the city attorney to look into it. What that means, I don't know, but he certainly said, "Look into it." That was it.
I'd just like to say, you're a busy lady. You've got all these things that you're...
All right. Is there any other business?
Mr. Chair, if I could, real quick.
I'm sorry, Sherry.
Sorry. I don't mean to belabor the meeting, but, you know, this is yet another meeting in which we've had to deal with setbacks and, and agreed with the applicant, but it happens time and time again. So we've, I think previously, we've asked for some sort of communication to the commission about what the code requires in terms of setback. If we're going to constantly agree to change them, then it means that they're wrong. At least, that's my perception. So I thought that we maybe had asked them about that, don't recall specifically, and I certainly know that we haven't heard back.
You're speaking to the Alavanas item?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that there was some communication to the city about the setbacks in previous meetings, but I don't think we've ever heard back. And I think you have a point.
I mean, it would be nice, it would be nice to have like a workshop on it in the different areas, like this one particular, this aisle and Hendricks, it always seems like the lots are so small that half the height becomes...
And that's what it is. You're bordered by the canal on one side of the road or the other, and by the time you try to put 10 pounds of you-know-what into a five-pound bag, and the problem is, is, not the problem, the reality is, is half the street is already redeveloped with all of these, so...
Different setbacks.
Well, or reductions in, in the setbacks. So, you know, it's, it's kind of late in the game to all of a sudden going, nope, you need to abide by the setback, when you've got everybody else that doesn't, so...
Yeah, that's true, but the requirements for granting a setback reduction have to do with, as you explained to me, that we have to make a finding, so to speak, that the architectural elements of the building are such that it, I really don't know how the architectural elements are supposed to mitigate the side setback reduction, but that's what it says. So clearly, there is a condition. So if you don't believe those conditions are met, you could always say no.
Right. The reason that they meet them is because if, without the setback, they just, they take two lots next to each other, and architecturally becomes a giant wall with less light as you drive by, which is why I think so many people have been in favor of these setbacks historically.
So maybe, maybe we're not looking at setbacks citywide, but in this particular area, I, this, I don't know how many cases we've had in the last four years, but...
Maybe easier to see them a little more.
And that's simply my point. And maybe it is regional, but it needs to be addressed, I think.
Yep. Okay.
Two more things. I sent you all the rules of order, the resolution you have been asking me for, for months now, so I wanted to know what your feedback is and what you want to do.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for doing that. But I think this has to be sort of rolled into discussion the commission has been having about adopting Robert's Rules of Orders. So I don't want us to be adopting something if they're already having this discussion about Robert's Rules of Order. So have you been instructed by the commission?
So the, the commission back in 2018 instructed our office to bring back, you know, the adopted rules. That was not done, I don't know why. What we had discussed a few months ago was that you all wanted to adopt rules, and we mentioned that it would have to be uniform across the board with everyone. So then, I believe Mike said, draft the resolution, you know, so I could see it, and so that's what I've done.